Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome, everybody, to our work session for Mayor and Council this July 5th, 2018. It's 3:00 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, you have the agendas before you. We're going to Tab A. This is work session. We also have a meeting following this one. So, Tab A, item number one, alcoholic beverages license request, Hickson Brewing Company.
We went real quick there.
Hang on that, Bobby. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Can I add something to the agenda? It will require Mecklen probably clarification on some of the legalities regarding T-Sploß and who can advocate for or against and what are the requirements as far as employees, elected officials, and that sort of thing.
Can we hold off on that because the agenda's in? David Mecklen's going to be here? Would that be amenable to you?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Please proceed, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I know we've got a lot to cover in a short amount of time, so I'll go through my stuff as quickly as I can. The first item I have is we have an application for a nano brewery by Mr. Brian Britt with Hickstown Brewing Company to locate a nano brewery at 407 Main Street in Villarica. I think you met him a couple times ago. One of the main reasons why we revised our ordinance to include this. Staff has reviewed the application. We've checked everything, including background check and proximity restriction locations, and we recommend approval on this, and he will be here at the regular meeting.
Any questions, council? Scene nine, item number two.
Mr. Mayor, we have a development that was -- the plat was originally recorded in 2004, Townsend Village Townhomes. It was partially built out, was built -- it was originally planted, it was planted as townhomes with a large tract with individual structures touching each other. And in order to market the remaining portions of that property, we, the city attorney and I, met with the applicant on two different occasions on how best to proceed to get that rest of that development marketable and moving forward. And we came up with taking the rest of the parcels that were listed and parceling those out into single lots. Originally, the zoning allowed 126 units. I think when they reparselled everything, it reduced the units by two. It's now 124 units. So, basically, it's just a re-recording of the plat. In your package, you have it. I have a large one here if you'd like to see it. It's a lot more clear than the little one that you're looking at. But our city attorney has looked at it with the concept, and we recommend approval as well on it, and he will also be here. The zoning has not changed. It will remain the multifamily zoning that it was. It's just the way the parcels are carved out now versus the way it was originally planted. Yes, it's multifamily.
How about one circle? Is this the one we talked about, the Anderson Road?
No.
This is another one?
This is a leftover that was planted before, and there's still lots left.
Okay.
These are up off of Daniel Road?
Yes, Daniel Road.
Got you. And it's already zoned multifamily, so it doesn't have to go to Penn Z?
And all of the original stipulations with the zoning still apply.
Okay. Any questions?
The only question I had was just related to the new codes that we passed and everything. All that will be applicable to this continuation of this neighborhood that's going to get finished out.
Well, all the infrastructure is already, has already been built. Roads, water sewer, curbs, everything. And sidewalks have been put in on all the portions that have been, that have buildings on them now. So, that will continue with the new stuff.
Okay.
And Mayor, planning and zoning did approve this. Final flats do go to them.
Good deal.
They were unanimous.
Any questions? Next, item three.
Mr. Mayor, we have a rezoning application, RA-03-18. It's also got a future land use map amendment attached to it if the zoning is approved. To rezone a piece of property on Old Stone Road, it's almost directly adjacent to the upper portion towards 61 of the Tanner property. The applicant is Steve and Teresa Pulver of Villarica, Georgia. They're requesting rezoning the property at 414 Old Stone Road from an R-20 single-family residential to an O-N-I. That whole corridor down Old Stone in front of the hospital is eventually going to want to go O-N-I, doctor's offices, dentist's offices, that kind of thing. The staff recommendations on this were the, to approve with limited permitted uses to business, medical, dental, and professional offices. All improvements to be installed on the property prior to occupancy, and the ingress and egress of the will be only permitted from Old Stone Road. Because it fronts on like 3, but the original driveway of the home is off Old Stone.
This was approved by the planning commission on June 26?
Yes, sir. And if the council approves the zoning, we'll have to do a future land use map amendment. You'll vote on that as well. Future land use map has this area listed as low-density residential, and it will, we recommended that that future land use map amendment go to public institutional to allow the O-N-I zoning in that area. And with the comp plan, when we redo all of the maps, future land use and all that, that whole corridor right there is more than likely going to go some form of O-N-I or low-density residential, commercial.
When you say corridor, are you talking about Old Stone Town Road from Punkin Town Road up to North Avenue or 61?
At least along the front of the hospital property.
Okay, so you're talking about the stretch from 61 back to Punkin Town?
Yeah. Maybe not all that stretch, but at least down, all the way down.
To the hospital entrance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tanner owns a good bit of property on below where they are now.
Okay. Any other questions?
Only thing I wanted to ask about, it said they submitted this change on May 11. Was everything permitted before the work began at this site?
No, we issued a stop work order on that site. They did some demo work, and he explained to the planning commission that all he was doing was doing, he demoed the driveway, demoed, gutted the house inside, and we're waiting on him to turn us in some drawings on finishing up that development. Because we issued, he got an electrical permit to get a temporary power to the house. That's all he got. He didn't secure any permits prior to getting this approved.
So, did it look like they were already planning to do this prior to the fact that the zoning hadn't been changed, have an office there and everything else?
Well, I don't think he was going to, the next step for him to move forward was to obtain an official building permit to do his remodeling and all that stuff. We would never have issued that before the property got rezoned.
So, do you have any concerns about the way it all happened?
Yes.
Okay.
As did the planning commission. And he explained to them, you know.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we immediately issued a stop work order to stop anything else, but he had pretty much already had stopped what he was doing.
Okay, thank you.
Item number four.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we've got.
Hang on.
Okay, this thing is a weird shape. It looks like a harrow and it's got a section sticking out toward whatever road that is. What's he planning to do with that section that's about where the house is?
The only, the only area he's planning on using is the area where the footprint of the house is.
Okay.
He's got some parking to put in front, five or six parking spaces, including a handicap space, but he indicated nothing about any other portion of that lot.
Because one of the conditions that he had, his entrance had to be on Old Stone Road.
Exactly. The ingress and egress has to be on Old Stone where the original driveway to the house. He's going to enclose the carport of the house and make that part of the office structure, but his entrance is going to be off Old Stone.
Okay. And of course, this has been properly advertised with signs and?
Absolutely, yes.
Did we receive any negative comments?
No comments at all.
Okay. Any other questions? Item number four.
Mayor, I think we've got, this has been disagreement with the, between the GDOT and City of Villarica on maintenance of Georgia DOT roadways inside the city, which has been in place for like two years, and this, I think this may be the third year of renewal. That's what this is, is a contract between Georgia DOT and City of Villarica, where DOT provides funding to mow and trim the rightaways that end up running through our city. It's 9.36 miles of GDOT rightaway to Villarica that we work into our normal mowing procedures. GDOT pays us $18,720 a year toward doing that, and this is just a renewal of the existing contract.
David, have you had a chance to look at this?
I have. It's the same agreement that we've had for the last couple of years.
Any questions?
Is it working well for us?
Money always works for us.
It's money.
I mean, we're.
And we keep, we get to keep it trimmed the way we want because we have to wait for GDOT. It might get real scrackly.
Well, what it does is it allows us to work it into our schedule, which is a lot more frequent.
Yes.
Than we can get otherwise.
Section in the city, isn't it?
9.36 miles, centerline miles. That's what they're saying.
Well, this is limited to GDOT roads, right?
Yes.
It does not include 78.
Doesn't include 78. That's a federal.
But it does include the 61 and Liberty Road interstate? Is this one that allows that or is there another? I know we have one that allows us to do that.
You know what, the interchange is?
State Route 61, Highway 101, and State Route 8, which is 78.
Eight is 78?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's what they're showing. On State Route 8 is 3.08 miles, 61 is 4.09 miles, and 101 is 2.19 miles per the agreement.
Does that sound right?
And we can do it for $2,000 a mile, right? No problem. Just want to make sure we're not overpaying anybody.
I don't think, I was here when we first did that. I don't think we included the interchanges in that.
Not in this contract, and I don't remember if there's a separate one or not.
I know we had to find something to get their permission from the federal people to be able to go on their rightaway and cut most interchanges.
Mr. Mayor, I'm dealing with the girl in the local office here. I can ask her if there's another agreement.
Would you do that?
I will do that, yes.
Because I know we did have that discussion.
Yes.
Five years ago. Any other questions? Item number five.
Mayor, this is the 211 South Carroll Road drainage fix for Ms. Fran Newton. I know this has taken a long time. It took almost four months for me to get a set of design drawings completed, to put this together, but we finally properly advertised it. We've got a set of contract documents that we're using. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting. I had three contractors show up. We had like eight contractors pick up the plan packets. We had three contractors show up at the mandatory pre-bid meeting. We got two bid quotations is all we got, and frankly, I was praying that we could get at least two. HNC Construction Company out of Temple, Georgia, bid $36,389.40. And Chatfield Contracting Incorporated out of Mary yet a bid $56,511 even. Staff is recommending we go with a low bidder.
So, they're a pretty active construction company?
They are in Temple, Georgia, and he's a small-time contractor, which is perfectly fine, and they're working in lots of areas, and they've done a ton of municipal work like this.
And you're going to put the drainage back on right away?
Yes.
Bobby, I'm just going to say this, having done this all my adult life, that is a large $20,000 difference in the two bids is a lot. That's.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, are you?
Well, my original engineer's estimate was $35,000.
Well, I understand that, but you know, you've got one, two contractors, and one of them's $20,000 higher than the other, so are you satisfied that for $36,000 we're going to get what you had designed in the scope of work?
Yes. Because the alternative at this point, the way the economy's picking up, we probably wouldn't get anybody else to even bid.
If his estimate was 35, that sounds good.
But you're confident that the scope of work that's required over there is going to be covered?
Yes.
Under this bid?
Yes.
Because there's no backup information in here with regard to the scope, so I'm relying on you.
Well, I didn't, I could have included my contract documents that's got the scope and everything in it, but it's like 30 pages, so.
Well, we've had hundreds of pages.
Yeah, I think it would, and y'all, you know, y'all tell me what you think, but I don't want to see a 30-page contract, but just the scope of work, I think that would be helpful if we got that as part of the agenda item. Just the scope of work. Yes, no?
Well, it just allows me to be able to go back and look at what our expectations are.
I've got it all electronic.
For this amount of money.
Yeah.
Even if you did it in bullet form, just so we know what the scope is, what we're getting for the?
Well, the project scope is one page.
That would be great.
Well, I think that would be helpful.
I'll do that.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Any other questions?
Only question I had is there was a company that you were going, whoever you were going to use to look at that problem there by Fran's area was also going to check the South Dogwood property.
We have looked at that.
Is that? Okay, we'll talk another time, but it's been looked at. Okay, thank you.
Item number six.
Mayor, if it's okay, I'm going to hand you guys out.
Bobby, do you have an extra one? Is it on there? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we've, since I've been here and since the economy's beginning to pick back up, we're uncovering several issues with previously planted subdivisions that have lots of vacant lots left. And as part of our new development regulations, you know, we've got sidewalks must be installed on at least one side of the street. And I think basically when all these, Exhibit 1, you've got is Watermist at Mirror Lake, and Exhibit 2, I think is Southwoods at Mirror Lake. That regulation was there when those were built. Our office just did not hold the builders accountable. If you'll look at Watermist at Mirror Lake, there are 31 vacant lots left, but you can see all of the existing homes that were built, with the only sidewalk on that page is going down Mirror Lake Boulevard. There's no sidewalks on the offsides in those cul-de-sac streets. And I don't think it's, I think it's going to look bad if we require the builder that comes in there and buys those 31 lots to put sidewalks in those new lots with no sidewalks in the others. If you'll look at the Southwoods, the lime green, it's, I've worked that in just before we adopted the new regulations to put sidewalks in areas that we could get them in there without any existing homes being constructed. You know, development like Mirror Lake should have sidewalks. And, but, that being said, it's, they need to make sense to me. I just don't know, of course, if we require them to put the new sidewalks in the new lots, you're going to have sidewalks going to nowhere. It's going to be a checkerboard mess. And I can't require the new builder to come in there on his dime and put the sidewalks in front of the existing homes.
Bobby, you and I talked about this, and I did, you know, think about it in my mind and how it would affect us in the future, and this is a David Mecklen question. I know that this also can apply to commercial businesses, and I can think of at least two on 78 Highway right now that when they built here in Villarica, they were required to put sidewalks in front of their businesses, and those sidewalks don't connect to anything. So, we can't unwind that clock, but my only concern, David, is always setting a precedent here. You know, it says in here this only applies to partially developed subdivisions, and that may cover us.
Well, you want to have, you want to have rules that are uniformly applied, but there are some circumstances where you're going to have to make some exceptions, or else the city will end up having to put the sidewalks in themselves, and we don't, probably at this point, we don't choose to do that.
Bobby, when I'm looking at Southwoods, it doesn't seem to me that you have that much of an issue except between South Creek Drive and back over to Creekhead Drive. So, you require the new construction, when you enter off of Mirror Lake Parkway, you require those sidewalks there on the right. That makes sense. Then you get back into all the new stuff, you require those back there. That makes sense.
That's correct.
The only thing that you have possible reason not to require is the existing homes, and there's only seven of those.
Actually, I think, you know, I think there's only one in the Southwoods that for a sidewalk, the new sidewalk proposed actually goes by an existing house, and I don't have it in writing, but I've got a promise from the builder that they'll do everything they can to put that one in for us.
I know the guy that owns that house. Has he been?
They were going to make contact with him first.
So, I don't see any?
The Watermist at Mirror Lake is a worst-case scenario that we're, you know.
I believe that Southwoods could be resolved without?
Oh, I think Southwoods, I just, I just used, you know, before we even adopted the new regs, I went ahead and met with them, and everybody's in agreement with Southwoods. I just threw it in and just.
Oh, I understand, okay. Well, so, my understanding, I'm with you on Waters Mist. I cannot, I just can't even imagine how we go through there, and, you know, this stretch has sidewalks, and then six, seven houses, no sidewalks, and then we have a sidewalk in front of one house, and then no house.
Yeah. I thought you were including Southwoods in the not required solution, so.
No. So, I, I'm in agreement with this recommendation, certainly as it pertains to Waters Mist.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, y'all, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't come to you unless we'd already adopted the new stuff, and I really have a choice at this point to get some guidance on it.
So, this is for Watermist only?
I think Watermist is probably the last major module in Mirror Lake where you've got half-built, half-not-built.
You said Watermist only, but it also includes Southwoods because you're not putting sidewalks in front of every bit of it.
Well.
You're just putting partial sidewalks, so includes both of them. You don't put sidewalks in front of houses and.
We're not going to go back and put sidewalks in front of existing houses. Sidewalks should have been built.
Yeah, I get that.
So, that will make, that will make, which one is it? Make Southwoods sidewalk all the way through it?
We're hoping to, yes, sir.
Who's telling me they are?
Tom will tell you that since I've been here, I've done lots of eye-rolling, riding around looking, and I just can't believe for the life of me how we didn't, wasn't paying attention to what we were doing.
Is that the only time you've seen?
No, Mayor, that's not the only time.
Any other questions? Item number six, I mean, seven.
Mayor, we have an application for retail package malt beverages and wine license for F&amp;B Edge Road LLC. This is the Chevron station on Edge Road. Actually, it came, it came to us a couple months ago when I think the sale of the store fell through, and he ended up pulling it at the last minute. I guess they got their differences worked out. We've done our background check, and staff has concurred that this application meets the.
Wait a minute, is this, this says Edge Road. The Chevron is actually on Liberty Road, isn't it?
Yeah, it's across from.
It's across from Edge Road?
It is, but the address is still Edge Road.
Is it?
It continues, only stops.
Okay. Well, it threw me off because I'm thinking of truck stop, but, okay, so it's the Chevron. So, you're saying Edge Road actually crosses?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's just there's nothing there but the Chevron, so it doesn't appear, okay.
But based on our analysis, we recommend approval. The applicant will be here at the regular meeting.
Okay, I see it on there now. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Okay, at this, I would like to see if y'all would be okay with amending and putting Leslie's question about T-Sploß discussion, questions that she had for David, is item B3.
Yes.
You do have a problem with her or okay with it?
No, I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right, Tab B, item number one, please take a look at the minutes of June 5th, 2018, and be prepared to either amend or approve those on Tuesday. Item B2. David, are you going to lead this one?
I'll lead into it. I think the information that you have is most of the information that I have about it. This is something that is, I want to say sweeping the state, but you can see a number of states and counties have signed on to participate in the litigation against the manufacturers of opioids. If it is of something that is of interest to the council, and if you want some additional information, I can ask the attorneys who are heading this up to come make a presentation either to the staff or to the council. I know Carroll County has recently expressed that they intend to become a participant in the litigation, and it is intended to seek reimbursement for expenditures that local governments have had to make dealing with the opioid problem in the state, and those would include costs such as increased jail fees, emergency services fees, police department action that's had to be taken with regard to the problem with people that have become addicted to opioid medication. What the proposal is, I mean, the suit's already pending, and it's already in existence as there have been a number of suits all throughout the country that have been filed. They've all now been consolidated in one, under the jurisdiction of one judge, and I think it's maybe in Indiana. I don't know for sure, but all of these cases are proceeding against the manufacturers. The allegation is that it was a known intent to. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but that's, that's the extent of my knowledge. If we want to participate in it, we have to pass a resolution that will express that we are interested in resolving the problem, and we also would enter into an engagement agreement with the attorneys. Andy Davis is of the law firm of Brinson, Askew, and Berry. They have represented the city on several occasions through Girma. Most recently, they represented the city on the lawsuit that was brought against the city and a number of other parties related to the death that occurred at the Hickory Level Apartments several years ago with a gentleman in a wheelchair. He represented us in that case and had a good result in getting the city dismissed. He also represented the, a number of cities in litigation similar to this involving websites, Travelocity, Expedia, et cetera, who were not paying sales tax to the state or to local governments on reservations that were made on those sites. And they were able to prevail in that litigation and get some benefit for the participating cities in, in that litigation.
This, this would be an expense to the city, though, wouldn't it?
No, it's, it's a proposed contingent fee agreement, so that they, they would be working on retaining a twenty-five percent of anything, any recovery that they were able to make for the city. So, it's not a direct out-of-pocket cost to us.
I don't know if it's a question more than, I actually can't imagine signing on to this, because if we do, we're saying that we've decided that all these companies named here, and it names them all out, as though we are saying we believe that they purposely did certain things, as though we would know whether they did or not. And I know there's been problems with opioids, but I also know there's people that are helped after surgery by opioids. I mean, I have been at some time. And there could be some company in here that did something wrong, but for us to sign on to a lawsuit so that, because we, we, the interest for us is that we might get some money. And I, I have attorney's attorney friends, but this is a cash cow for litigation attorneys, just like the lawsuit in Florida with tobacco and the tons of money that were recovered in the tobacco suits. And I, I don't think they necessarily always do it because they're concerned about us getting money for what we paid out for crime, or, I don't know. I think it's crazy.
Leslie, I understand your concern, but this is, the lawsuit hasn't been settled yet, so we're not saying that any of these companies, at this point, have done anything wrong. But I guess to answer what you just said, Chief Slevin, I was gonna ask him a question about it, but if the, if we, if the city, Narcan is the one that I'm thinking of, if we have a direct cost as a result of, of a company doing something that they knowingly knew was gonna cause issues, do you not think that we should get reimbursed for that?
I read over this and what we're signing on to, and I, I just wasn't comfortable at all with the lawsuit based on what it was saying.
Okay.
It does, it says, it basically makes these claims that this is what they did. I think that we're in a difficult position to say that, yeah, we, we agree with that.
Well, my, my view on that is that that's not what we're doing. We're suggesting that we would be participants if there was a finding that they had actually engaged in that type of behavior and conduct. I would probably be inclined to, to support being a party to this, because I do know that while we may not be devastated by it, there are a lot of cities across the country that are being devastated with direct cost. And David, I guess I would just ask you, in legal terms, I mean, can you substantiate damages that the city would have incurred because of this potential abuse?
We haven't looked into it yet, and, and part of, I don't, I think it's included in this package is a questionnaire for the city to fill out to attempt to document what those costs have been to us. I, I have spoken to Chief Mansour, and he has said that, yes, you know, there are some situations where we are, have clearly been affected by the, the type of problems that this litigation is intended to address. And Councilwoman McPherson, there's no doubt that some of these drugs are, do have very beneficial purposes. I mean, they're prescribed by doctors who are supposedly making the decisions. I think what it is intended to address is the, the parts of the system that are wrong. Situations where you've got, you know, literally millions of pills going into a community of several hundred persons, that, that type of, you know, somebody should have said, "This isn't right, that there shouldn't be these many pills going into this area, 'cause there's simply not enough people."
Well, and I just read an article the other day that talked about the marketing of some of these, these drugs, where they're actually spending millions of dollars in perks to doctors' offices and things like that to get them to write these prescriptions. So, I'm, I'm certainly not saying that they're all bad news. I'm just saying if that kind of conduct was going on, and if it was a cost to the city, we ought to have a way to recover.
Well, and you'd have to deal with doctors that are, I mean, they've gone after doctors, both in this, at least south of us in Florida, and here with those pain clinics, ones that just, but, you know, we also had a meth epidemic that, you know, decimated areas and people, but I guess they couldn't go after Sudafed. I mean, people do make some choices.
Well, there are a lot of restrictions in place right now on buying Sudafed. You can't just walk in and buy quantities anymore. So, you know, these types, this type of litigation leads to those types of controls, and sometimes you don't need the litigation, but I would be, you know, that, that would be my opinion on it.
Chief, can I ask you a question? Please. I just wanted to see you walk up here, actually. You can go back.
It took so long, you forgot what that...
That's fine. A question was asked just a while ago. Can you substantiate that there has been a cost involved in the opioid problem here in Villa Rica?
Without question. All of the Narcan doses that we use or have had to use, those cost money, they're not given to the departments. I mean, we've gotten some through grants and stuff like that. The time we spend on the calls where we have to go and, you know, I mean, there's been some people that we've had to use it more than once on. I mean, it's just, yeah, it's definitely, definitely bad. So, we, we need any help we can get.
Has there been a, has there been a cost with alcohol abuse and meth abuse?
Yes, Mayor.
Do you have one of those pending, David, that you'd like to talk to us about?
Not, not yet.
Okay, so we'll just deal with this one.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Any other questions or concerns or comments, or...
If, if there's any additional information you want me to try and dig up, I'd be glad to do it. I don't profess to be the expert on this.
I do, I would like for Tuesday night to, you know, give a summary of what we're talking about, what, what this addresses and, and, if you don't mind.
Sure, I'll be prepared.
You know, we don't wanna sign on to anything frivolous, and we're not suggesting doing that, and, but is it possible to have this questionnaire partially filled out or filled out, or so that you can have more information Tuesday night?
Yeah, I'll try and get with the chief and figure out as, you know, as many answers as we can.
Okay.
My question is, if Carroll County is going to do this, how, does that affect all the cities within the county?
No, not necessarily, because, you know, our expenses for the Villa Rica Police Department would not be included within the costs that the Carroll County Sheriff's Department has incurred.
Item number three, T-Sploß discussion. Leslie?
Yeah, David, if you could help us, I'm, I know I can't be the only one that's heard conflicting information on not so much T-Sploß, just T-Sploß happens to be the thing that will be on the, on the ballot. What elected officials are allowed to say for and against this item? What employees that are paid with taxpayer dollars, can they advocate, not advocate? In what way can they advocate public dollars being spent, so that everybody knows what they're supposed to do? 'Cause I, I have different stories out there.
I, I think I understand the question. It is very clear that a public entity, City of Villa Rica, cannot spend taxpayer dollars to advertise or promote the T-Sploß. We can't pay to run ads in the newspaper saying, "Vote yes" or "Vote no" for T-Sploß. That is clearly prohibited. We do, however, I mean, as an elected official, you have the right to express your opinion on whether it's a good or a bad idea, and whether or not you intend to vote for or against the T-Sploß, and to give your reasons as to why you are going to vote for or against it. City employees, they, they do have the First Amendment rights to express their own personal opinion. No city employee should be out saying the City of Villa Rica supports the T-Sploß, because the City of Villa Rica, which is you, haven't voted, voted to participate in it, but, yeah, I, I think that it's, as an individual, everybody has the right to express theirselves. City doesn't have the right to spend money on it. You individually, if you wanna contribute to an ad run by some sort of third party or group, there's nothing to prevent you from doing that. I don't know if that answers, you know, it...
No, I think that's pretty good, so, and any employee on their own time can do anything they want.
They won't.
There was a printout that was handed out at a meeting, I attended it. And the top, but I don't, I'm assuming the county printed it? The first paragraph sounded very much like advocacy, and I didn't know if that was okay or not, because that would be taxpayer dollars, right? Just like the school system, the T-Sploß.
Right.
Now, what if employees, people that are paid with tax dollars, are during regular hours at a meeting, saying positive things about it? That would be advocacy? I don't see how it couldn't be, but...
Yeah, I, you know, a city employee...
More negative. I mean, they could be saying negative things.
I, I don't think that a city employee is prevented from expressing their personal opinion. Again, I, just to pick on somebody, I'll say Bobby Elliott, sitting in a meeting with a group of other county officials, saying, you know, "I support the T-Sploß." I don't think there's any problem with that. I think Bobby Elliott going to a meeting, a civic club meeting, and saying that, you know, "I'm in favor of the T-Sploß, it's gonna help us, I believe it's gonna help us out in Villa Rica," I don't think there's a problem with that. Where the problem comes in is, you know, submitting an ad to the newspaper, saying, you know, "The City of Villa Rica is paying to vote yes for T-Sploß." That, that is a violation of the law. You have, you, you as a ci, it is not a, it's not an absolute clear-cut line, but you as a city have voted to, to sign on to the agreement, so, you know, you, the city itself is a supporter of it.
I thought it was an important question.
Well, you're not holding things up. Did you get your question answered, or...
I think so. It seems a little gray in some areas.
Life, life can be gray sometimes.
All right, so the, the question that I have about this specific brochure is, if we put together a project list as a city, and we communicate that on the website or however, maybe that's defensible.
It is.
But if we say, "If this gets approved, then it's gonna allow us to take money and do something else with it other than transportation?"
I don't even...
That seems like you're taking another step toward advocacy, 'cause that's a sales pitch, right?
Mm-hmm.
But the project list is a sales pitch, too, right? So, I mean, there's some part of selling in this thing that is allowed, but you can do a project list.
You can clearly do the project list, and I would argue you could do that, that second step, is saying that if the T-Sploß is approved, then this is gonna divert, this is going to give us this much money to improve our roads, and will allow us to free up the budget for other items. I think that's permissible. I don't think it's permissible for the city in that ad to, to then go on to say, "Vote yes for T-Sploß."
I don't, I don't wanna drag this out, but let me just say that, yes, if, if T-Sploß passes, there are a lot of dollars that are gonna be able to use, we're gonna be able to use for roads here that we're not gonna have to take out of the general fund to spend.
Right.
So, I would just say that.
I mean, there, there's nothing wrong with telling the truth, which is what we would be doing in those ads, so long as we don't take that next step and say, "We're promoting it, go vote for it."
You pretty much can say what you want to until you try to influence the vote.
That's maybe a good summary.
That would be, that would be met, made way before your qualification.
But didn't I hear you just say that we as individuals can go even that far, as long as we're not speaking on behalf of the city, which we haven't done?
Right.
We haven't taken out any ads for that. But me as an individual, if I wanna tell you to go vote yes, or if you ask me, and I say, "That would be my suggestion," no problem.
I, I think that's right. There's nothing to prevent Gil McDougal from running an ad in the paper saying, "Vote for T-Sploß," if, if you're paying the bill for the ad.
Okay.
And you're an elected official, but it's hard to get up in the meeting and start saying, "Hey, this is really, this is a way that it can cause us problems." Then you'd be advocating, that would be an issue, wouldn't it?
No, 'cause he's...
Yeah. I, I...
Because it would benefit you, is that why?
Hmm, no, I think...
You couldn't do that, could you, as a pay, as a paid employee?
I think he'd be in trouble with, with y'all. I think, I think he's much smarter than that.
Is it, is it effectively, you're promoting is one thing and educating is another? Isn't that the two standards?
That's the words.
Right. If he says, "This is a bad deal for the City of Villa Rica because," and then he states, based on his knowledge as a city manager, then that's education.
Sure.
Okay.
I wish I could give you a bright line to say, "Do this, not this," but it is a gray standard that you just, you, you clearly cannot spend public money...
To promote it.
Promoting it.
So, if we do something you don't like, you're gonna tell us?
I will.
Okay.
All right. That's good enough.
Is that clear as mud now? Okay. Tab C, item number one. Vicky Coleman, while she's on the way up, I just wanna commend you, Vicky, and, and your staff, and the, all the employees, 'cause this is truly a county-wide, city-wide effort, really county-wide, but, and Chief Mansour, who continues to do a great job. And in my opinion, and having birthed a baby thirteen years ago, the fireworks display on July 3rd, and the entertainment was among the best that we have ever had. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm glad you liked it. I think staff is still recovering.
Well, they were out there working well after it was over, but I, I would echo those comments, and I did that night. That was probably, you know, he's been doing it a lot longer, I suppose, but that was the best one I've seen, period.
I'm glad you guys enjoyed it, and everyone enjoyed it. I think everyone loved the bands, and certainly got a lot of comments of feedback on the bands, so... Okay, the item that's before you. This is a request regarding an appointment to the Recreation Advisory Committee. You have the application that is attached. This is Mr. Clay C. Hudson.
Quasi.
Quasi. Excuse me. Foreign appointment to the Recreation Advisory Committee. He's certainly previously volunteered with the city as relates to poaching, so very familiar with the department itself and the recreation activities. Staff is recommending... Staff is recommending approval. I do want to bring to your attention, I'm going to have to update this application. He did, when I had a conversation with him regarding, he incorrectly made a selection on his application that I asked, you know, to get more information about. Right, on page number two, the financial information, when I asked to get more information on it, he was like, "I don't know the city any money," and I just said, "You made the wrong selection on here, so we'll get you an updated application for that." I'll just give you an initial.
Tremendous choice. I think he'll be a good addition to the Recreation Advisor Commission.
Does this fill up the committee, or are there openings?
I'm sorry?
Does this make the committee full?
No, this is.
This don't even make it half-full, does it?
Doesn't even make it half-full, yeah.
So we got a lot of space there.
So the applications have, I know the clerk is advertising them, but it's, we're still working to get additional appointments to the committee.
And I said it before, and first off, I'll say, I think Quasi's an excellent choice here, but I will also just reiterate what I've said before, which is, we need to do more to get more people on these boards, especially that board, because that's a very active board. You said the city clerk is advertising that?
She advertised it. We put the information in the city happenings. We can seek to push it out to Facebook.
Maybe do something with your groups out there at the Rec Department. I mean, you have so many people coming out there, it's just surprising to me that it's not full.
Right.
And that people aren't banging the door down to try to get on it.
The feedback I always get, they're very particular about what they want to volunteer and spend their time on, but we're going to continue to work on it. You know, those who love coaching, that's exactly what they want to do.
That's who I'm, that's who I'm thinking of.
So, but we'll certainly continue to work on it and promote the vacancies.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Tab D, economic development. While Chris is on the way up here, I'm going to pat him on the back also, pat everybody on the back today. But I went, I was supposed to go to a class on economic development and look through my slides and saw several slides of our Welcome Center and Downtown Renaissance Plan, so.
I didn't plant those.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is a request for to enter in a license agreement with the Olive Tree for beer and wine sales at the amphitheater for the August Summer Concert. This agreement is exactly the same as the other two agreements that we did. David did due diligence on this, and everything is in order, and no deviation from the two previous agreements that we did. We just decided to break them out and just to make sure that things are going well before we move on to the next event. So having said that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Just a couple of questions. Chief, have we had any problems at the other, no problems with the first one? Second question I have is, we do the 60-40 split, so is that working for us?
Yes, we did somewhere high 900s this past go-around. We anticipate more people being at this August concert than any of the previous, so we'll probably break the $1,000 threshold at this point.
What is our conference?
Mother's fine.
I have voted for security, and I think that was my intention, and I thought, I thought that was kind of the road we were heading down, that they would be occasional, that we have the alcohol at our concerts. I also had to make sure it's not an express concern where they're being at all our events, and so I'll just kind of put that out there.
Let me clarify, they're not at all of our events. They're not, we're not going to come and ask for Thrill of the Mill to serve alcohol. We didn't serve it at the time of stores and festivals. Won't be at the Christmas Parade, so to say that it's at all of our venues is not correct. It's just the concerts, and that's in response to community feedback that we've gotten, that we'd like to have the opportunity to have beer and wine at specific events, so it's not all the events at the end.
That Gold Rush won't be in your intention?
Gold Rush.
Gold Rush, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Gold Rush. We haven't, we've been talking about it in the office, but we haven't made the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Now, rumor has it that when they had the street dance many years ago, there was a little bit of alcohol involved in that, and.
I used to attend. I was much smaller back then.
Oh, you furnished it out?
I said, "Ten." They used to back a truck, a trailer bed up out here.
Some of us in this room invented those street dances and can testify that there was a little alcohol going on. At least I hope there was. I don't want to think adults were acting that way without alcohol.
All the events, regardless of sanctioned or not, it's providing.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tab E. Come on down, chief.
He's holding up his Elmo sign.
This is just too much pressure, y'all, I can't.
I walked slow, but you didn't praise me. I was kind of disappointed, but okay.
Well, they all told me to talk up.
I had it distracted. If he was doing good on time, let's keep moving.
I'll tell you, Tuesday night, you did a rave, you flashed that real good. Thank you, sir. I appreciate, and I was out there, wasn't I?
You were.
I was out there working. Thank you.
Riding the golf cart, that what you got, where?
Yes, sir.
Just checking, just checking.
I'm getting told to go ahead. So basically, what this is, is an ordinance for technology fee that we've been working with David on. David, what's the word for it? Constructed it or built it and.
Prepared it.
Prepared it, and it'll be a $15 fee for any tickets that we write in the city. Obviously, it's only applicable to fee, or to tickets that it can be. If the state does not allow add-ons, then we won't add-on, but everything else that it will be added on to. And the money will go to equipment and stuff for court. We're adding a assistant court clerk. We'll use some of that money to equip their office and everything that goes into their office, including the computers and stuff like that, and computer printers and things for the cars that the citations are issued on and stuff. How did you come up with the $15? Well, we checked other areas around, some of them were 10, some of them were 25, and we just tried to stay in the middle.
David, on wearing your other hat, is this typical, or?
Not every city does it. It's something that we've been kicking around here for several years now. We, other cities do have it and impose a technology fee. We were not legally able to do it up until when our new charter was passed, and in that charter, there was a specific permission granted to the city to impose a information technology fee if we chose to do so. Prior to that time, we would have had to gotten the state legislature to approve any fee we imposed, but in the chart, new charter, we were delegated the authority to impose this fee if we saw fit to do it. It's intended to give the police department some additional funds, or the city, for the benefit of the police department or the court, to come up with additional funds that are needed is for evolving technology.
There's no question that the IT costs to the city have skyrocketed, and I have no problem passing this along to those who use it. You do say in here that the estimate is $72,000. Is that annually, or is that?
That's annually, and basically, we, I had the court clerk pull citations that it would be eligible to be added to from the last couple of years, and that's about where we're at.
Okay. All right.
And we incurred a lot more cost, and David can tell you this, we can no longer charge back when somebody's serving in jail, because we pay a $35 a day fee for them to be in jail. We can no longer charge back when somebody using is, uses an interpreter, you know, that's several hundred dollars for court. So there's a lot of things that we're no longer able to charge back on that, you know, this will help recover some of the costs.
So David, if we pass this on Tuesday, what would be the effective date? Do we have to give some notice, or do we just?
I think you would have to, you'd have to give a date to it, or even if it becomes effective on the day you pass it, then it would only apply to citations that were written after that date.
But it could. It could apply to those after Tuesday, if we approve it on Tuesday.
If you got a ticket yesterday.
I understand.
Going to court a month from now, it would not apply.
I understand. Any tickets written prior to passing, but I'm saying as of passing.
As of that date, yes, any citation written. Another point to make on this, because it's a hot topic everywhere right now, is that we need to continuously monitor how this is being applied in the city. I know some of you have read the stories about whatever city it was over on the east side of Atlanta that was essentially paying for 35 or 40% of their entire city budget through police department fines.
We want to do that.
And we do not ever want to be in that position. We will.
I know a few of those cities, they aren't close though.
Yeah, we will continue to monitor this and make sure that this, you know, doesn't get out of hand.
And our fines are less than 5% of our budget, so we're pretty good, sir.
Okay. I wa, I was glad to see that they didn't apply to seatbelts, only because, I mean, I always wear mine, but in a seatbelt, like, I do.
$15. Seatbelt's $15.
And then if you were to add, you know, this on, and.
Might put your seatbelt on.
Huh?
You might put your seatbelt on.
No, I wear my.
I'm not talking about you, but.
A lot of times, it's lower socioeconomic people that get hit with these things, and even tickets can be harsh. I mean.
Yeah, but thanks for bringing the seatbelt, too.
Your kid get a superspeeder and it turns into thousands? Because there's all these extra little fees, and they make you pay for a probation person and everything else, you know, for a speeding ticket, a probation person.
Miss Hefsey, is this going to be a different line item?
It has to be kept separate just for IT, right? Just for IT. And so, the ticket.
Just for courts.
The tickets that you think it would apply to most would be tickets like?
Everything but a seatbelt and child restraint.
And the child restraint.
And the new law that they added recently.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm so sorry. I have one more. The ordinance says in case of, oh, I shouldn't ask it, I shouldn't ask this question now. Is that right? In case of multiple citations and convictions, and it said something about Section 3 mandatory state add-ons, does that just mean that if they got a bunch of citations at once, it would be applied to all of them?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not that you have to have multiple citations before this kicks in?
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. For those of you that are looking at the Elmo fan up here, that council member messes, Elmo is an acronym for Enough, Let's Move On, just in case you wondered.
I thought he was just hot.
Tab F. Sarah, you going to give an abbreviated version today and give us the full spiel on Tuesday?
The three-slide version.
The queen of PowerPoint.
First, I wanted to let you all know that 2017 audit is done, was turned into the state last week. The auditors were not available to be here today or next week, so they'll come in office.
Are they playing golf?
Maybe. Also, I wanted to remind everybody that we have the Budget Workshop next Thursday, the 12th, at 3:00 p.m. here.
Are we going to have a copy of the budget to look at by then?
I'm not sure. Still waiting on the property tax. All right, this is your May update. This is just a quick summary of our business activity. This is through May. So water sewer, you can see, we have 37% improvement from last year in our overall net loss. We've lost 37% less than this time last year. And solid waste, we have lost more money here in 2018, but that expense number includes more personnel. We realigned our personnel appropriately this year, and we also have a higher tipping fees. Any questions on that? All right, next, just wanted to highlight a few things. So that, the one we just saw, those were our enterprise funds, but our general fund, we are seeing some good numbers. Our sales tax revenue compared to 2017 has improved quite a bit. Last year, we had almost $950,000 at this time, whereas now, we're already at $1,086,000. Hotel motel, you know, we've done the audit for the hotel motel tax, and they will be collecting for us for a year. They're still doing that, so they collect it for us and they send us a check. So you can see, we have not quite doubled, but at this point, last year, we had $60,000 in hotel revenue, and we've already brought in $100,000. Water purchases, just wanted to highlight this, we talked about it last month. This is not revenue, this is an expenditure, but at this point last year, we had already purchased $200,000 in water from Carroll County Water Authority, and we are still spending that $78,000 so far in 2018.
Thank you Lord for the rain.
Yes. Who goes to deep in his staff or do some, getting that improved, I guess. And I just wanted to point out another item there is total employees. This, this time last year, we had 143. Now, during the summer, we have seasonal employees, like summer camp and stuff. I did not include those in there. So these are permanent, full-time and part-time employees. 143 last year, 152 this year. Any questions on that? All right, and last, is our self-funded insurance.
Wait a minute, I do, I think I do have a question, actually. Okay. Jump from 143 to 152 employees, is, are those new employees, or are those just, that's not.
It's not account of positions, those are actual filled, those are actual employees that are here. So we could have had openings.
Okay.
We know we've added city engineer, building inspector, we know we've added positions as well.
Okay, I think that's important, we didn't add nine more positions.
Maybe in despite for the next budget, number employees? You have a number, I'm sure.
I don't have an.
140?
I would say no.
You're going downhill?
Some of the employees that were paid, we were paying other companies, and in some cases, we were paying more, or we were paying the county, but we were losing money, paying the county companies back, or now we have our own part-time employees, so that keeps it comfortable.
And I just, Jim didn't know I was going to say this, but the other day, we had lightning, Tom and I, we were talking, lightning hit literally in front of the city hall and knocked out several monitors, computers, all the phone system, and had we been contracted with an outside firm, it would have been at least days before we got the phones back on and the computer monitor swapped out. Literally, when I was there, within 15 minutes, Tom was swapping, I mean, Tom, Jim was swapping out monitors, getting computers back up, taking care of the phone situation, so, proof. You can play me later, Jim.
Last is our self-funded insurance. This is a comparison between what we actually paid last year to United Healthcare compared to what we are paying now, when we are only paying administrative fees monthly, and we also pay claims for medical expenses and prescription for our employees. So you can see in the last, what would that be, eight months, we have saved, comparing cash outlay, we've saved $261,000.
Jim don't want money, he wants an office.
Any questions on that? I'll show, yeah, I'll show that on Tuesday. For brand-new construction, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Tab G, Tom?
We have an exciting array of items to discuss here. The first one is the billboard lease, or the ground lease for the billboard for Gaston Outdoor Advertising. David has worked with. David has worked with Alan. We prepared something that I think we can live with. It's only ten years, so not as long as was requested. We are continuing to request payment in kind through the use of another sign so that Chris can use that on advertisement of events. Although we're putting in there the option of taking cash in lieu of that if we so desire some point in the future. There was another request for the ability to sublease or assign this to a purchaser, which we've not allowed. And I'm trying to think if there was anything else. So there were several things in there that were asked for, but we're not recommending those. So this is a ten-year lease that we think keeps us in good shape. I've talked to Charlie some about the maintenance, which we think is still reasonable, and as you remember, this is gonna allow him now to confidently incur the expense required to cut the trees on both sides of the sign so that it has better visibility.
Questions? Comments?
David, you've, you either produced this or have reviewed it. I'm, I'm comfortable with the terms. I see the city, in its own discretion, determines whether or not it collects cash on a monthly basis or whether it has a use of a sign.
Correct.
And to me, that was probably the more immediate concern, so I'm comfortable with it as it's written.
I had, in the initial phase of this, I had some question as to what the appropriate amount of rent would be if we were paying cash, and as I've, has been described to me that this is market rent for a billboard lease.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, number two?
All right, number two is an update on the repair of the wall on the west side of Hillcrest Cemetery. We came to you back a couple of meetings ago and asked for authorization to spend twenty thousand dollars to try to rebuild that wall where the grave, the graves on the west side were starting to slide onto the property adjacent to it. Once we got into it and started taking out the shrubs and the trees, the fence, and whatever else was holding all that together, we had several of the sidewalls collapse as you work away from Seventy-Eighth South into the property. We're now estimating that to build, um, the wall that we've requested, which is footings, rebar, block wall with a stone face with chain link on the top of it for three-hundred feet or so, is gonna cost seventy-five thousand dollars. In addition, the neighbor has asked us to put a more expensive fence on top of the wall, which I am not recommending. I think a chain link is adequate for what we're doing there and would only add to the cost. So at this point in time, the contractor's still working, so I'm outside of my spending authority, so I need y'all to either give me the green light to finish this or tell me what you want me to do if you want us to stop at the point that we are today.
Have we spent twenty thousand?
Oh, yes. I've already written the check for twenty-six-five. So we've paid for materials for the first hundred feet, which is coming off of Seventy-Eighth. In Charlie's words, about every thing that could've gone wrong from the time we started doing the excavation has gone wrong, including heavy rains and walls collapsing. So we're rebuilding a lot of the sidewalls on those grave sites in addition to building the block wall.
I think it was shocking to, you know, approve twenty and then have it, you know, more than triple. So was the main reason, I mean, we can't have people's graves falling, can't have people's graves falling into another business's property or just falling at all on a city cemetery, but is that what made it go up so much? Is a whole bunch of other things fell apart? It was a lot worse than...
Falling apart as we work on it. There's just nothing holding it together. We built these grave sites literally at least up to the property line, if not farther, and what was holding it all together was the chain link fence. So what we're doing now is building a block wall that sits on top of a concrete footing that's got rebar in it that will, I don't wanna say permanently, but effectively will permanently hold it all in place. This should've been done a long, long time ago. The fence was an inexpensive stock gap, and at some point, it quit being effective just over time.
I'm gonna say this, when we discussed this last month at the work session, I was, I felt like I was pretty persistent about understanding the scope of the work and the money that we appropriated at that time, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. I've thought about this, and I've looked back at all of my notes. I still think that we need to do a better job of getting, of an understanding of the scope of these jobs when we approve this money, even in these not-to-exceeds, because we went from not to exceed twenty thousand to now this is seventy-five thousand. Having said that, I've walked that property, and literally, there are places where if I were to use my hand, I probably would see a casket. So there's no question that the work has to be done.
You don't have any choice.
I didn't dig in there, so I can't tell you that for sure, but it certainly feels like it needs to be. And a lot of work has been done. I don't think that we're in a position to, to stop this job. At this time, I think we're gonna have to just approve the rest of this money and get it done, but we have got to do a better job in the future of understanding the scope of what we are dealing with. And I understand, Charlie said a number of things went wrong, just about everything that could go wrong, and maybe that's, maybe that's the case, but I just feel like in that work session, I tried to push for that information, and I'm just not confident that there was a good understanding of what the scope was.
Other questions or comments?
I guess my issue with the whole thing is that, you know, I don't understand cement block. I don't understand brick. I don't understand why the rock was put up.
We're doing that purely to accommodate the neighbor.
The neighbor paid for it, then.
Yeah, there's a cost differential between brick and stone, but it, it seemed at that point in time to be worth the aggravation that we were gonna put him through, 'cause we were storing the building material in his parking lot.
Okay.
Right, so we got some concession out of that, but now we're in this back and forth about the fence, and unless y'all tell me something different, I'm sticking to our guns and we're putting chain link up. We've already got the poles mounted.
Chain link is good.
That we've already built, so.
Now, yeah.
That's what was there.
Well, the wall...
Reined upon his, uh, his property, but all the materials and whatever, now then he wanted, uh, something other than brick. I can see that.
All right, so if he wants to come back and pay the difference on an expensive fence, to add-on to the chain link?
Rawd iron, yeah.
Right to check.
Y'all don't have a problem with that, right?
I don't have a problem with that. He's getting a much more substantial, uh, wall than was there previous anyway. I mean, well, yeah, but it's substantial already, and so whatever you put on the top of it, I have no problem with the, the chain link is fine for me, but if he wants to pay it the difference and improve it, I have no problem with that.
Take the money first.
To Councilman McDougal's point, Bobby, this is a question for you. Um, I know when we first talked about this, this was a concrete block wall. Now it's a stacked stone wall. The stacked stone that we're using is synthetic rock. It's not real rock, which means it is a molded concrete. It's just concrete. Is there any other wall in that cemetery stacked stone?
All the other walls in the cemetery are probably brick. I haven't seen any stacked stone anywhere else.
What's the difference in cost in the brick and the stacked stone?
Um, brick is probably a little more expensive because it's a little more labor-intensive. Um, it's probably, stacked stone's probably two-thirds.
Brick is more expensive. It is not more labor-intensive, in my opinion.
Yeah. Well, you know, what they do is they, they put a thin set on the block wall and stick the stone on it. That's what, that's what they do.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any more money available? From the cemetery fund, or maybe from the garden club, or...
We're gonna have to under-spend something in the supply to reallocate it. Cemetery fund, what's your cash balance? So they're told, that's all the money they have except for grave site sales. It's Hillcrest.
Is it possible by Tuesday to have an idea where this is gonna be coming from, Sarah? Okay, thank you.
You know, let me just say one other thing, and it's a little bit too late for this, but we weren't involved until it was too late. But we probably should've seen bids on doing brick, because, one, it would've matched, but two, this stacked stone stuff that they stick to the side of these walls falls down. We're gonna have gaps down through there. The maintenance on that over a number of years is gonna continue to fall on us, where if we had put brick up, it'd probably be standing there thirty or forty years from now before we had to do anything other than power wash it. I, it's, it's just a little frustrating.
Any other comments or questions? Number four?
Three.
I'm sorry, number three.
What happens when you doodle and you can't read your own doodle?
All right, item number three we received by email from Comcast, and their email indicates that, due to whose oversight, I can't say, that we had a franchise agreement that expired five years ago. So they're proposing a new agreement, which is before you, for your consideration.
Is this similar to the previous agreement?
There's a few changes in it, and, um, I have read over it. I've got a few comments about it that I don't have here with me today, but I'll have them before Tuesday. By and large, it seems to be okay. Uh, it does increase the amount of money, I think, that we're getting from three to five percent, so that's, that's a plus.
Okay, here's how the contract, that hadn't been updated since 2013, so I know because we've changed city managers, that has had a, that has been an issue, but I hope we're getting a handle on this. This is just not acceptable. I mean, we've been, let me calm down a little bit. Okay, has the number changed since 2013? Are we receiving the same amount of money from Comcast?
I don't know the answer to that. My assumption is that the reason this wasn't picked up is because we have continued to receive the money. Somebody needs to verify that. I don't believe it means that they have simply not been paying. I think that...
But we don't know that. It's as if we've been, we've been receiving the money.
Yeah.
But I think to the, to the mayor's point, is there not a system in place to track contracts? Shouldn't there be? I think I'd like to know, and I think he would like to know, that there is a system in place, post-haste.
I think that is important also.
Where these things are being flagged, five years is...
Yeah, like in this case, this thing expired before a leasing agreement.
an Excel spreadsheet that would do something very similar to that in the meanwhile.
If you just input the date of year.
So this is just one, this is a Comcast contract. What about the other service providers? We don't know?
Yeah, we get, we're, we're in a franchise arrangement with all three of the power companies.
Are we looking at those?
We get a check from Greystone, Carroll.
Well, what are the, what are the contract terms? When, when do they expire or will expire?
I don't have any idea. I've never looked at one, even in the other places I've worked.
You know, I have reviewed all of them when they have come to me, when they were enacted, but I have not had any role in continuing to monitor them afterwards, and I think that's an excellent suggestion, is to, to come up with some sort of system whereby when we enter into a contract, that we plug in the, the date that it terminates, so that, you know, thirty, sixty, ninety days ahead of time, something pops up to remind us of that.
The same issue we have with the bonds on the neighborhood.
That's what I was gonna bring up.
That's the other big one.
And I just wanna make sure, I mean, we're talking about one right here, but if we're, if we're not careful, we're gonna make the same mistakes again, and that, that's what keeps me up at night. We're talking about Comcast here, but we also have DirecTV, the other, whoever else that we have.
ETMT.
I want us to do, Sarah, whoever this, whoever's lap this is gonna follow in, I just want us to make sure that we're not gonna, you know, next year, we're gonna get another, hey, this, this contract with DirecTV hasn't come up since 2012. You know, now's the time, we caught one.
Let's look at everyone.
You know, shame on us, but we're gonna get, you know, we're gonna get the rest of them now and get them right.
And maybe 'cause this one happened in 2013, 'cause when I came into office in fourteen, the city manager that we had at that time that had just been hired by the previous council, I remember this coming up under her watch, because somebody was putting cable in, and all of us were asking, hey, what's going on on the side of the street? And then started looking back and seeing that everybody wasn't doing their franchise stuff, so, um, I think I had assumed that that was something that got looked at, because I remember her mentioning, we need to make sure we're getting those franchise fees and that, that sort of thing.
Well, and that's just, these are, this is contracts, direct contract, but, but think about waste industries. Think about how we're not looking at some of these things as they come up. We spend a lot of resources on all this GIS, which is absolutely necessary and critical, but this also is. We need to do, we need to have somebody going through, pulling these files and keeping some kind of a tracking system and date system so that we're ahead of the game. We're always behind. Every time something comes up, we're behind. This time it's five years, but it's easily been years.
They shouldn't have to go through it. It should pop up. We need, we need a program that manages these things and lets us know what's coming up.
The check and, the check system before was if, if the funds didn't come in, that's when we looked at it. I mean, when the check, when the check didn't arrive in the mail, then...
I don't think that works for it.
But what triggers you to tell you that you're supposed to get a check?
Let me, let me under-simplify things. When I schedule fourteen vast terms in advance, it pops up on my calendar. There should be some, some kind of technology app, something out there that has, when you plug the contract information in, that it comes up on somebody's dashboard that this needs to be talked about. I mean, that's not, it doesn't seem to be too difficult. Am I missing something? Okay.
Not today's technology.
All right, let's, Sarah?
You put that at number two-hundred-and-seventeen on your list?
Yeah.
I unders, we, we understand.
We had the same problem in Fairbun.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we're not the only city or... Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we're not the only city or county that, that suffers with this, but I just.
The way you fix it is you go to the first folder in your archive and you open it up and you see what contracts are in it and then you read it and see if it's expired. And you go to the next document in the folder, the next document, and the next folder, and the next drawer, and the next cabinet, and that's how you fix it. And you build a spreadsheet and it takes a while.
Have we got a person to do that?
No.
But our record retention system will, will help us with that.
But it's just like the situation with the bonds. If we get new neighborhoods, or even, even now with some of these that are being reinvigorated, we're getting new bonds. Bobby leaves, Denise leaves, Nyree leaves, nobody remembers, bond expires, they don't perform, it's the same, it's the same problem, so they gotta be in there too. And there's probably some other things like that also.
And that's why we've gotta build it into a system, because we've been talking about that institutional knowledge being a problem for as long as I can remember sitting here.
Good with that.
Okay.
Another example of where it's important is on our contracts that are existing that renew annually if we don't give notice certain time ahead of.
Automatically renewed.
Yeah, they automatically renew, so we all, we're always chasing what, when to cancel a contract.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Item number four?
All right, number four is a second cut at a discussion about meeting times. We talked, brought this up at work session last month. We proposed at that time that we consider looking at a couple of Mondays to get off of the two, first Tuesday timeframe so that we wouldn't be conflicting with the Carroll County Commission meeting. We had a couple of problems with that, so now, um, there's been some talk about possibly moving from a work session council meeting, um, structure to two voting meetings, one on the second Tuesday and one on the fourth Tuesday. If we do that, we would have to move two standing meetings because historic preservation and P and Z are on those two nights. But that would be maybe more palatable for what we're trying to do. So this is just for your consideration. I don't have a timeframe in mind. I just still feel like that with the size of the agendas that we're having, that the possibility of maybe 10 or 12 items twice a month without a work session would work better for us right now as while we have so many things going on. And then maybe we wanna change it to something else after we, you know, after things slow down, but anyway, that's, for your consideration, I don't know how much y'all are talking about it individually, but I wanna bring it back tonight so that you can at least be thinking about it and hopefully talking about it.
What was your proposed times? Would they both be six o'clock or, it might be in there?
No, I didn't, I'm not proposing to change in the, in the time.
Okay, so both of them would be six o'clock?
It was going from the first to the second and fourth one. It was switching down a week.
Right.
I think Monday was said it was several holidays involved.
Right.
I can see second, fourth Tuesday.
And I think, Leslie, didn't you send something out asking some of those questions?
I just called people individually.
Is that what it was? Okay.
What, what they felt.
I, I'm good with the second and the fourth Tuesday at 6:00 PM as well. Uh, we have been talking about it. Several folks have talked at different times and, uh, I'm an advocate for this because I think it is gonna allow us to get a better handle on things rather than waiting 30 days between every meeting. There's just too much that goes on during that timeframe. Just an example, tonight, we could've talked about that fence already or that, the wall down at the cemetery, but there are endless examples of where we could be involved much sooner than having to wait 30 days to get anything done. So I'm an advocate for the second and fourth Tuesday at 6:00 PM.
I have no problem with it as long as you understand that if those become voting meetings or council meetings, and we have very little discussion between us that, um, we might very well be able to table some of that stuff if we don't really feel comfortable voting on it, as long as the council understands that.
We're try, we're trying to deliberately bring y'all's stuff a month ahead of time and, you know, like the handbook and the development information, because there's just some things you just need time to chew on.
Well, when you table something with a schedule like this, you're getting to it in two weeks as opposed to in 30 days, so it's less of an impact and I, I can understand that we would be doing that a little more than we.
We get a, this meeting here, we get a lot of different opinions and information that we don't get, we're not get if we went to just two council meetings.
And I like the fact that Tom said it doesn't necessarily have to be written in stone. The fact is right now, I mean, I just describe it as it seems like we're drinking through a fire hose all the time because there's just so much happening and maybe things will level out, we can look at it again then, but, I'm good with the second, fourth Tuesday.
David, David, is there any, just any mention of our meetings in the charter? I know there's something said about the meetings, but there's no.
I think it's within the power of the council to set the meetings.
Yeah.
It may say the first Tuesday, but it also says that you have the right to change that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, when, when would it be effective if you wanna have this come back to vote on? Do you wanna switch it in October after the budget or what do you wanna do?
I think we have, just my opinion, I think we have so many meetings on the budget already on the calendar. I think that waiting, uh, until October would be sufficient time for everybody. That's my opinion.
I think it's probably a good opinion.
September, October, whatever.
Okay.
So we could come up with a motion for Tuesday.
Okay.
To that effect. Second and fourth Tuesday at 6:00 PM, beginning the second Tuesday in October.
Yeah.
All right, item number five, uh, is something that came across, uh, my desk also, um, after talking with the city attorney. Um, there's a Senate Bill 17 that passed that gives a community an opportunity to vote to make a change on the sale of alcohol in restaurants, to move the time potentially up as early as 11:00 AM. It is the council's authority, as I understand it, to make the decision of whether that goes on the ballot or not. And then at that point, it's up to the voters. So I, I don't feel like I have any responsibility, but to show it to you and for you to tell me if you want to vote on this Tuesday night to potentially put this on the ballot.
We already have a, a ballot in, in November. We have a question which is on the TAD, so will it cost us anything else to add this question to the ballot?
It, it should not. And, and I did speak to the election superintendent and in order to have this on the ballot for November, we would have to take some action by July 27th.
Okay, I'm, I think it needs to be on Tuesday nights meeting and I think we need to take action on it. Anytime you have something like this that the voters have a chance to vote on, I think they should be allowed to vote on it.
And, and I agree with that. I mean, if the, if the voters want it, it's theirs. Let it go on the ballot, doesn't cost us any money to do it. If they say no, they say no.
I agree with that. My only concern was that, this is my only concern, is that we're gonna have the TAD and T-SPOST, is it gonna be overwhelming for the voter? Because everybody needs to be educated on what all these things are, along with the governor, lieutenant governor, secretary of state. So we'll have three, three local things, two specific de Villareca, right? T-SPOST would be countywide, but two, and, and people need to be educated on it or they'll show up and go, what's this? And be voting on it. You want them to know what it is. T-SPOST is gonna, not T-SPOST, the TAD's gonna be a little bit more complicated.
Development powers.
To explain. That was my only concern, is, is it gonna be overwhelming for the voters to try to?
We have from July, we put on Tuesday night, we have from then to November to educate the voters on what those things are. We have several means of doing it.
This will, this will be a lot less complicated to explain.
Yeah.
Than the TAD.
All right, so I have a question for you, David. So my understanding, or my assumption is that there's more than one way this could be presented on the ballot or interpreted, because the language I saw said as early as 11, but the ballot language is fixed. Right? The language of ballot is in the.
It's, it's in the bill.
So we're not deciding between 12 o'clock or 11:30 or 11?
No, right, right now, our law says 12:30 and the question on the ballot is whether or not to move that up to 11 o'clock. I mean, I think that's, that will be the question virtually in every municipality and county that chooses to, to allow the vote is, and that's why it's called the brunch bill, is so that if people are going to eat brunch, they can get a alcoholic beverage before 12:30 in the afternoon.
Any other comments or questions? Item number six?
All right. As you all well know, we are out of space in City Hall. We're not only out of space, but we're having to assign people work areas that aren't, not only not offices, but some of them are not even at desks. We had Jim in a closet, Jasmine in a corner, Gary's in a corner, and Peggy, Tracy and Alisa are all fair game to anybody that walks in the building because they're not in a office space. So we need to do something and I'm not ready to recommend that we relocate to the library, but we do have access to the Georgia Power Building. So I sent, um, the chairman an email and asked him about it. He referred me to Stacy, who's the, the Development Authority attorney. She took it to them and they have approved a lease for one year for $1 that we could potentially renew. My idea would be that we would move the cashiering function there. There's a, a place, a glass cage and a drive-through just like we have at City Hall, so we could move those people. We could probably move code enforcement and stormwater. That way we'd have some guys there where the money's being collected, which would make me a little bit more comfortable. And then we'd have the possibility of moving some people around out of the bullpen into what we call the man cave outside of the, of the main building. So that's for your consideration. I'd like for y'all to approve that so we can free up some space and maybe even take a look at doing something with the receptionist position so that we can move sort of information and directing traffic and doing notary work to someone that, and answering the phone just at that desk and then free up Tracy and Alisa who are having to do a lot of 30-minute notary things for, you know, this, this not a good use of their time.
Tom, do we have any idea how much this is gonna cost as far as renovation is concerned?
It doesn't, it doesn't look like a lot, like any substantial renovation potentially. We're gonna, we're gonna go up there if you approve this and, and decide exactly how many people we can get on the office side, but there's a little bit of a bullpen in there and our code guys don't, you know, they're not sitting at a, at a desk all day, so, you know, they can, they can share the space.
Is there a reason why this is for one year?
No, I mean, it was put, one year to be renewed. If, if, there's no real reason, no.
Okay, well, the question, I understand it's renewable. The, the question is how much money would we spend?
Yeah, I don't think we are.
You don't think so?
I mean, the drive-through and the cage is there, the building's been pretty well preserved, it looks like. I've had Nick go through it. So, I mean, the building looks pretty good. I think we could, we could move in there pretty quickly. Jim's already worked on the Wi-Fi and knows how he would do that line of sight from City Hall because it's adjacent to us. And, um, if something comes up, you know, somebody goes to the Development Authority and offers them, you know, $500,000 for the building, then I would assume that we would cooperate with that and say, okay, well, we'll go do something else. I wasn't trying to tie it up.
Does it need paint inside and did it freshen up?
It didn't look like it to me. I mean, you, you've been in it.
Yeah.
And I think the thought was also if we do make a decision about a more long-term plan for City Hall, we didn't wanna be tied up in a long-term lease either.
If you like the idea of a longer lease, I mean.
I just wondered, but if it's not gonna cost, uh, we don't have a lot of, uh, money to put out in, uh, preparing the building for use. I expected it to be in use before now, so, no, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Tab H, Human Resources, Stephanie?
Save the best for last.
We try to learn from our mistakes.
Only time will tell.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, hopefully you have all had an opportunity to read the handbook and have any questions. We went through it last, last time. You should have a list of the proposed changes in your council packet. Um, if you want to, we can go by, down the list one by one, or would you like to just, um, would you like to just ask questions of the sections that you're concerned with?
Your personal agreement, uh, page 26 is listed twice in there.
Yes, I know.
Any particular reason? Just, just the way they did it, huh?
So the first thing, if you look at page 34, we are going to change the eligibility requirements for our 457 plan. You will not be able to contribute to this plan until you've completed your probationary period, which is 180 days, um, with an option to extend. The city will not match anything to this plan until after the probationary period. Um, bereavement leave on page 39, if you look at that, we have added a, um, provision that if you have to trial 200.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Could I interrupt just for a moment?
Absolutely.
Is there any reason for us to go through every one of these again? Could we just, if anybody has questions about a specific one, bring that up just in the interest of time?
I've got them marked in my book if you want, if you have questions.
Okay. I, I.
I don't have a problem.
We, we all agree that it can't be here.
And that's what I thought. You've already made that.
I have.
Correction, so that.
So we don't even have to talk about that one at all, right? Is everybody good? Okay, good. I have a question on page nine.
Okay.
Second degree of affinity or consanguinity? Say that.
It can't be related to the mayor.
How related is second degree by affinity or consanguinity?
Grandchildren and cousins, from what I remember.
Extended out to, so, and this isn't a change, right?
No, this is not a change at all.
This is already in here. I just, I was going back and reading the whole thing. I decided to go back and read the whole thing again. So we, we're, when it said service of city, is that a board? I mean, here, here's my.
Where are you?
Um, page nine, one, two, there's a finishing paragraph, underemployment of relatives, second paragraph, um, but it also said service delivered, uh, to, to the city. Is that boards and commissions? The reason I ask it is like this, and Gil, I even thought of, of you, but it's a non-voting thing and. But it's a non-voting thing and your sister, you could have something like that, like with Main Street, couldn't you?
I assume so. This is basically addressing being an elected official. Being an elected official, a member of city council, the mayor is the relative, and employment, if there's no direct relationship.
Boards and commissions, as they're all... Okay.
David, can you explain what the affinity by or consanguinity for the mayor is?
For any of us, or anybody of the council? There is a chart and it would be, to give you a definition, I'll bring it with me on Tuesday, but second degree is, includes certainly all your parents, all your children, your siblings. You could then go, to the second degree would be your, your sibling's children, your parent's brother or sister is the second degree. I mean, it's really just a second step out from somebody who is directly related to you.
So if I had a cousin, they couldn't be in the police department?
That's...
I'm just trying to see exactly where we are so we all understand.
That's right. If you had a cousin, first cousin, this would...
I don't have any, but I'm just trying to see how this will, how this plays out so that we know we understand what's in our manual here, policy book. Okay. Small town, it can be difficult sometimes.
You know, I don't know how that plays into, for example, your spouse. I need to look at that to figure out whether or not, if you were married to someone, that, you know, that's going to apply to the second step from them also.
So, we're going to look at this and y'all will take a look at the things that she has bullet pointed and then we'll vote on it Tuesday night. Okay?
Oh, so will we still be changing it? Voting yea or nay, up or down, or changes?
Yeah, that's, that's...
I don't, I don't like using taxpayer dollars to pay for people's college courses. I have a real issue with that one. That's one of the big ones for me.
It might be a good idea to decide how we're going to address these issues. If there's a list of ten disputed issues that we need to talk, talk about, it might be better to decide all those items, to vote on the whole document as opposed to having 15, 10 or 15 different votes on the, each individual point.
And this might just be an example. On page 10, "A transfer of employee from one department to another must have the approval of both department heads concerned and the human resource director." But don't you kind of look at that stuff too, Tom? That kind of seems like it rises to the level that you want to be, that you would want to know if somebody moved from one department to another. With move.
So we, so we had a transfer recently and it, it originated at the staff level and then, and then came up to me for approval.
Okay, so you're still looking at all that sort of thing?
But only after they all agree. And I think even the employees probably both agreed too, before I even got involved in it.
The tobacco policy on page 14, it seems to contradict to a degree because it will say not inside or outside city buildings, but then it does allow a department head to put, designate a spot, that they may allow a spot. You can look at that again. I mean, you don't, you don't have to go over all of it right now, but it seems to be contradictory.
I actually got that policy from another city, so...
It's prohibited in, in all city buildings, inside and outside, but then down below, it says that the, the department heads can designate. And they probably should, especially if somebody's, but they don't have to. So they could say, no, one department head could say, I'm not going to have one. And another, another department head could say, well, I will, I'll set up a designated place. There might be some people trying to quit, or they're vaping, trying to quit, and they're using less nicotine, you know, as long as they're not near the doorway, near the doorways and stuff like that.
It's a gray area. So you can or you can't. Like you rob a bank, you either rob or you don't. And you smoke or you don't. It's a property. Or there's a, somebody else says you can or can't. You can't have it both ways.
So what, what's the consensus of the council? Do you want it to be a no smoking in or out, period, with no leeway for the department head?
Correct.
I think the policy has to apply across the city, rather than leaving it up to individual departments. So either we have designated areas within each department, or we have none. And I, I was in favor of the none. I thought that's what we had agreed on before.
Right. I think you have a, a city ordinance that prohibits smoking in any public building throughout the city. I mean, and that's going to supersede any personnel regulations.
How about outside?
That's in the buildings.
Because this says not outside either.
I think, I think that city ordinance prohibits smoking on any public property, anywhere. So you'd have to change the ordinance.
Including in vehicles.
So you have to take that, that part about department heads out because it's, it's not allowed anyway.
Okay, so that's going to come out. You know, I don't smoke, I don't like smoking, but I have some empathy that people do have certain freedoms and rights and if they're away from the door and they're, you know, where they're not blowing it on other people, I don't see a big deal with allowing somebody to have a place to go do that. And frankly, some of them are doing a lot better with the vaping. We won't debate that here, but some of it is tobacco-free and everything else. If it helps them not use tobacco, but it's still vaping, you know.
Okay. So do we want to, how do we want to implement these changes? Do we want to take these one by one and vote on them, or do, because I'm going to have comments on this tuition reimbursement program. I'm okay with the other items that you've brought up. I would just say, we, we are an employer and to me, it is consistent among employers to have policies like this. I've been employed in corporate, corporate situations for pretty much all my life until I owned my own business. I have this same type of thing within my business. It only makes sense. It strengthens the staff you have and it encourages people to come in. This is not a huge cost and I think it's a great program to have within our, as another benefit, just as we try to improve our insurance to people, just as we try to improve a number of, of benefits. This is just one and it's probably going to be a tiny amount of money every year because not a whole lot of people take advantage of this, but it is still an opportunity. I'm going to be in favor of keeping that in this policy.
We have two, at least two departments that require people to go back to school, get certifications, and that we already pay for. So why not extend that to other folks as long as it's pertaining to their job?
Well, there's certain types of trainings. We do customer service training, things like that. I'm not sure of the specific one you're talking about, but once you start getting into paying for people's college courses and then we'll pay, if you make this grade, we'll pay this much. If you make this grade, we'll pay this much.
But you also, it's part of the succession planning also. If you have somebody that doesn't have a degree, go get a degree and then you can, you can mentor them into growing within the city in their position. So it's really overall a good strategic move, in my opinion, because say, I didn't have a degree, but I had 20 years of experience, I wouldn't be eligible for the position.
Well, and that's, that's a separate debate of what really makes somebody qualified, that they can do the job well or they have a degree, because I've been seeing people with degrees that...
Let me see if I can help.
The degree.
Let's move this thing forward, because I know, we've talked about this personnel policy manual now for a while. There's about 20 things on here that I guess you've identified that were kind of talked about by council when you presented this. Is it reasonable for us to go down that list? Give you two options. Is it reasonable for us to go down that list of 20 things and anything that you may have an issue with, remove that, similar to what we do with the consent agenda, and then approve the policy without those? And we call, the policy manual is always a workable document, so we'll be changing things as we go. It won't be there forever. Is that reasonable? Or just to talk, you know, vote on each one of these tonight and leave them out completely until further notice? What, you know, I'm just trying to move this thing along, or we're going to be talking about this for the next hour?
I agree with it.
So we'll go down the list and those things you have questions on, we'll talk about those. Okay?
Well, I mean, just, just to ask a question, is that the only, is that the only item that, that we're going to have a difference on?
I don't know. I know there's two that y'all have seen, like, that there's a little bit of discussion on.
I just thought if that's the only one, then we could take that one and vote on it, or, you know, get a consensus.
If everybody agrees that there's only those, you're saying one item, which is a tuition reimbursement. Is that the only issue?
One item that a lot of discussion on last week was the discounted rates for the Parkinson Rec program.
Well, let's, here we go. We're going into the one hour now, so let's go down the list and we'll, the ones we have questions about, we can discuss those in detail and try to get this thing passed next Tuesday, hopefully. So the first one is 457 plan eligibility. Any problems with that one?
Nope.
If I don't hear a yes, we're going to move to the next one. Bereavement leave?
Nope.
Breaks?
Nope.
Discounted facility rentals for employees? Okay, so we'll make them up by that one, Stephanie. Duty to report criminal charges and determinations?
Nope.
Yes or no?
Nope.
Say yes.
I heard. That's Lisa.
Yes, it would need to be in the policy. That was a yes. Okay, mark that one. Fitness for duty?
That's when you're coming back from an extended medical leave, you have to go through a drug screen and a...
Yes or no?
Nope. Nope.
Interior appointment and salary adjustment calculation?
Nope.
Jewelry piercings and tattoos?
Been clarified. Nope.
Leave accruals?
Nope.
Loss or damage to city equipment?
Yeah, we need to look at that one.
Okay, so we'll take, mark that one. Nursing murders?
Nope.
Personal grooming?
Nope.
That's personal grooming. There's two of them there, so, okay. Personal leave? Positive drug screen results?
Nope.
Tobacco use policy?
Nope.
I think we did.
Is that a yes?
It was a yes.
I've taken that section.
All right.
There's something in there that doesn't belong.
Transfer policy?
Nope.
Tuition reimbursement?
Yes, I think Gil had a problem.
No, I, I'm a no.
Okay, so, so do you have those listed?
I do.
Okay.
So we have discounted facility rentals.
So here's what I would like the, the council to do, rather than us...
Can we, can we do this? The ones that were earmarked, if y'all have made note of those, and hopefully you have, we, it will greatly reduce the amount of time that we discuss this. If y'all will read those thoroughly and then any questions or comments that you want to make to them, we can address those Tuesday night.
If you go through the list, the ones we said no to.
Pardon?
You, you mark?
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we have reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone wishing to give a public comment, please do so at this time. Come forward, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your minute, your words to three minutes, or minutes to minutes.
Alan Gaston, 403 Shady Valley Drive, Carrollton, Georgia. Mayor and city council. Mr. Barber and I met on the billboard lease. He came up with several different ideas, but I never saw a final draft and if there's any way I could get a final draft, and I'm not sure what, it went real quick, so I'm not sure what the final draft said, so I didn't know if there's any time to talk about it or discuss it before the next meeting, or if that was final, or...
I'll, I'll be glad to email it to you tomorrow.
Okay. And also, I, I don't have a problem with, you know, paying a monthly fee or, or doing a trade with the billboards for the city, but I'd like for the trade to be, you know, equal to equal. I mean, like if the, if the billboard's, you know, $1,000 a month here and the monthly's $4.50, not, not trade it out for that same amount for that month, but to do a, you know, equal amount of what the billboard is to what the trade is. And also, when I was, about a month ago, I was cutting the trees and cleaning out the retention pond at the intersection of 61 and 78. And at that time, I'm not sure how to pronounce Pete's last name, but his crew was out there putting the pine straw out and showing the convicts and everything what to do. And I just think you have, Pete has two very, very good, talented employees that look over that landscape, that they really take pride in what they do and, and like they really cared about landscaping that id, area. They, that's two real good guys you got working there. I can't even remember their names, but there's two, two guys working over the landscaping crew there at the intersection.
Yep. Connor?
Thank you, sir.
John Hennaback, 3106, Golfer's Way. I like the idea of you going to the two meetings a month instead of the work session. I think that will greatly improve things. Just know, and it was brought up, planning and zoning meets on the fourth Tuesday of every month. And I don't know whether that's documented somewhere. We're pretty flexible. We can change. Also know that we're going to a 5:30 start with a half an hour, if you will, work session before we go to our regular planning and zoning meetings. So just be aware, I don't know that there are any other committees or organizations that would have a conflict or not. I know, Bobby, we can talk about changing our date, but, you know, it should not be a problem for us, I would think. You may have some others. That's a good idea.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if I could have a point of personal privilege, I would like to just introduce the council to Sam Newsom, who has gone to work with me. Sam just got out of the active duty with the Marine Corps a month or so ago. He's a major in the JAG Corps and he's going to be working with me and excited to have him with us.
Good, well, good.
Well, if he's a Marine, he's suited for being at the meetings, isn't he?
Yeah, I thought I needed personal protection.
You think the crucial is to have some of our meetings?
Okay. Let's move into the consent agenda and see how many of these we can put on our consent agenda. So starting with tab A, item number one, we have to talk about...
Before you get into that, I got a question. John Hennaback brought up, the planning and zoning P and Z is still only meeting once a month. Is this going to affect our two council meetings per month? I mean, we're only going...
Good.
I mean, is that going to have any effect at all?
I wouldn't think it.
We're not going to slow anybody down, but we have and do meetings, it's only have...
If anything, it should speed it up.
Yeah, they should have better access to the council.
Yeah.
They only, we always get everything they see anyway, that one meeting.
Good point, though. Okay, tab A1, we have to talk about that. A2. Yep, talk about that. A3. A4.
A4 consent.
Yeah.
All right. All right. South Carroll Road drainage.
Consent.
Partially developed subdivisions.
Consent.
Alcoholic beverage licenses, we have to talk about. Minutes we have to approve. Discussion of opioid litigation, I think we absolutely need to talk about that. Councilmember McPherson, do you want B3 to be on the agenda? Okay, remove B3. C1, we have to vote. The person has to be sworn in, but I can do that at City Hall if that's, is our council. D1.
Do we have to discuss that? If not, consent. Okay, consent agenda.
Consent. You say no, no, fine.
Are you gonna lose? Okay. So, that one we talked about. E1.
Taking D1 back off.
Yeah, taking D off.
Yeah. D1 is not on the consent agenda. E1.
Yes.
Consent. F1.
F needs to be on the consent agenda. Don't bet we can do that.
G1, we need to talk about that one, all right? Uh, G2.
Consent.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, consent agenda.
G3.
Consent. Exactly.
No.
But it is gonna get better if they get finished, but it...
So, 4, we, we have a motion coming to us, so we need to wait on that.
Right. G5.
I guess we need to talk about that.
We're gonna talk about that, and David, you're gone.
Yes.
Okay. All right, G6.
Consent.
Consent.
And absolutely, H1. I am. Okay, these are the items that I have on consent agenda. Tab A4, A5, A6. Tab B, I'm sorry, C1, E1. And then, is that G? G2, G3, G6. Does anybody see it any differently? All right, we will adjourn this meeting, and y'all wanna take just a five-minute, 10-minute break, and then we'll start the other one, or do you wanna go right into it?
I, I need a small break.
Okay, we'll take, we will reconvene at 5:20? 15? We will reconvene at 5:20.
You're going to take your session?
Yeah, we gotta start the meeting.